Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, July 6, 2021. Meeting announcements. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. All meetings will be cable cast on the City Channel and live streamed on the City Channel Pittsburgh YouTube Channel. And I do want to say that Council is working on our return. We are doing some things that other people may not have to do because we open to the public once we are here. So I want to make sure that everyone's, I want to make sure everyone's protected, including the public. With that said, will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
This is Kell Smith, President. I'm Members President.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our next order of business is proclamation that we have wanted to be read into the record for myself.
Council President presents Bill Number 1679. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, July 6, 2021, to be B-Martial Day in the City of Pittsburgh and declares that the month of June 2022 and every month of June thereafter to be B-Martial Month in the City of Pittsburgh.
Is there motion to approve it a second? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Proclamation is approved. Thank you, everyone, and congratulations to be, thank you for all that you do for the Juneteenth celebration. The next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberations, which may, which are or may be before City Council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. May we have the first speaker, please, Madam Clerk?
Our first speaker is Steve Stamey, followed by Ikahana Halmaquina.
Thank you. Please state your name and your neighborhood for the record. You have three minutes to speak.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Hello. Please continue.
Oh, hi. There was no, there was silence. My name is Steve Stamey. I, I live in the Friendship area, have for the past forty-two years. And I got a, my neighbors and I got a postcard from the City of Pittsburgh that you are going to move stop signs in front of our house and move the streets around and put in handicapped accesses and narrow the streets to one lane. This is ridiculous. There are trucks that go through here. Also, there are ambulances and, and emergency vehicles that can't get through here. This is the five-way intersection right behind all these in Shadyside, in Friendship. You know what I mean? All five of those stop signs, they want to move and they want to extend the curbs way into the intersection so that it'll be unfunctional. Nobody bothered to tell any of the homeowners here. This group that's sponsoring this, the Friendship Community Group, these people don't live here. They're not from this area. And the people that live here, we don't want this to happen. We fought very hard for a long time to make sure that this area was safe, that there were decent stop signs, the trees were trimmed, so on and so forth. And this is going to basically mess that all up. Plus, the city is going to be on the hook for $175,000 in upkeep for the artwork, the asphalt art that is going to be painted in front of my home. I don't know how you're going to compensate the homeowners here for their losses and for the, basically picking up of the neighborhood is going to reduce our livability here. It's unfortunate that you have chosen to, as a, as a body, to listen to people that don't live here and, and push this through. I got a thing from Bill Paduto. It says that he asks himself every day what he can do to bring us together as one city. Bill, you've known me for forty-two years. You could answer your phone. You could call people back that call you with legitimate beefs. My City Council Representative, Ms. Gross, she could actually call people back. That would be really nice if you'd call somebody back ever, ever. I have known you for years and you have never called me back. This goes on, this is basically being shoved down the throats of the people that pay their taxes and own property here. People that are trying to put this FGC group together don't live here. They don't have anything to do with us. They don't, they're basically just going to want to pick up and make my neighborhood a mess.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Ikahana Halmaquina.
She on? I don't see her on here, do you?
No, I don't.
Okay, is there any other further speakers?
No, it was just those two.
Okay, let's, let's call her name one more time, just to make sure. I don't see her on here either.
Next speaker is Ikahana Halmaquina.
Okay, seeing no further speakers, we'll move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers, and we will begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President. Good morning.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, Councilman. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1666, Resolution Granting Anticipacy Their LLC, Their Successors, and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense to Install a Set of Entry Stairs and Landing at Aller Way in the Rear of 1004 Constant Street, Number 200, in the Twenty-Third Ward, Forbes Council District. Bill Number 1667, Resolution Granting unto Flats On Forward LP, Their Successors, and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense to Construct Four Bays That Will Contain Forty-three Housing Units at 5824 Forward Avenue in the Fourteenth Ward, Fifth Council District. Bill Number 1668, Resolution Granting unto Joe Kandier, Their Successors, and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense a New Set of Concrete Entry Steps Landing and a Railing at 4726 and 4728 Hatfield Street in the Ninth Ward, Seventh Council District. Bill Number 1669, Resolution Approving the Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that a Wide Light Way be paved with Asphalt in accordance with Section 141706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Wardenesses. Bill Number 1670, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 375, Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase of the Smithfield Street Reconstruction Project and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs thereof not to exceed $800,000 and the previously authorized municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $5,000 to increase the total not to exceed amount to $9,080,000 for the addition of the final design utility work right away and construction phases to the project federally reimbursable at eighty percent and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $47,000 an increase of $42,000. Bill Number 1671, Resolution Granting unto Michael Khalid, Their Successors, and Assigns the Privilege and License to Reconstruct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense an Existing Concrete ADA Ramp and Pad at Forbes Avenue Entrance, a Concrete Plant Along the Foundation of the Existing Building and First Level Facade that extends until the Right Way at 3721 Forbes Avenue in the Fourth Ward, Third Council District. Bill Number 1672, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 307, Granting unto Urban Pittsburgh Downtown Hotel Company, Their Successors, and Assigns the Privilege and License to Construct, Maintain, and Use at Their Own Cost and Expense a Generator Exhaust Pipe and Two New Projecting Signs at 405 Wood Street in the First Ward, Sixth Council District.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good morning.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1673, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter Into a Contribution and Cooperation Agreement with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for Certain Utility Relocation and Other Work Elements in Connection with the South Side Signals Project.
Madam President and Councilwoman Gross, could I ask for your indulgence, please, on this? This is a federally funded project, which is traffic signal upgrades from Carson Street to Amanda Street. And this is just a cooperation agreement between the city and PWSA for utility location relocation. So could I ask your indulgence to waive the rules to have this appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda so that we may move this project?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Motion to waive the rules of council to have this appear in tomorrow's Standing Committee.
Thanks, Councilwoman. Appreciate it. And I'll second it, please.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The bill will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman.
And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1674, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Joseph and Marcella Quarn, Sixth Mill Road Street in the Amount $37,703 in Settlement of a Claim for Damage to the Residents at Sixth Mill Road Street from a City Police Vehicle on February 10, 2021. Bill Number 1678, Resolution, Amending Resolution 865, which authorized the Mayor and Director of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into an amended to parking agreements to amend existing designated meter revenue and corporation agreements between the city and the Pittsburgh Public Parking Authority for the Purpose of Dedicating Revenue Generated by Increased Parking Rates to the City and to Further Document Updates to the Parking Court Corporation Agreement with the Mellon Square Garage Lease and the Monaga Halo Wharf Lease to Authorize a Second Amendment to Parking Agreements to Further amend the Corporation Agreement and the Monaga Halo Wharf Lease between the city and the Pittsburgh Public Parking Authority and to amend certain other terms of the Amendment to Parking Agreements.
Councilman, you have a motion to waive the rules of council for Bills 1651 and 1656?
The move.
A second?
Very brief discussion. I don't see 51 and 56 on my agenda. Forgive me.
It's on my agenda.
Madam Clerk, can you help us out here?
No, I have Bill 1674, the two I just read, 1674 and 1678.
Correct. That's all I see.
I have 1656.
Do you? I don't.
That's weird.
Yeah, that is weird. I don't have, the, the agenda that was sent over this morning has 1674, Louise and him, you guys have some.
I think back, 1656, I scrolled down to it. It's under Final Action.
Well, it's under Final Action. Is that the, is the bill?
1656 is the Mar.
Emergency Declaration?
Contract. So sixteen, on my agenda, 1656 is under Final Action under Finance, which is the Mar Duzel contract.
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Lavelle, what, do you have a bill that you want to make, waive the rule of council for? Do you want to just waive it for Bill, what was the Bill Number, Madam Clerk?
No, he doesn't have a waiver unless he wants to on Bill 1674 and Bill 1678.
No, I don't need to.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman, and thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, I just, to be clear, it's on my sheet to, to make the motion. Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Good morning.
And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill Number 1675, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 410, entitled Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter to Create Contract or Agreement with GBWH Pittsburgh LLC, New Horizon, to Provide ITIL V4 Foundation to Support Ongoing Development of Innovation and Performance Staff to Support Critical IT Infrastructure for a SOM not to exceed $41,600 to Authorize the Mayor and Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into an Agreement thereto with GBWH Pittsburgh LLC, New Horizons, to Provide ITIL V4 Foundation to Support Ongoing Development of Additional Innovation and Performance Staff to Support Critical IT Infrastructure and an additional amount not to exceed $30,000 for a Total Not to Exceed Amount of $71,600.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1676, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections to Enter Into a Single Source Agreement with Construction Junction for a One-Year Pilot Program to Perform Deconstruction Services in Conjunction with Demolitions of City-Owned Condemned Structures.
Thank you. And myself, I have one communication, Madam Clerk.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 1677, Communication for Michael Lamb, City Controller, Submitting the Popular Annual Financial Report for the Fiscal Year Ending December 31 of 2020.
Have a motion to read, receive, and file?
The moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's approved. And now we'll move on to unfinished businesses or any unfinished business people of council. Seeing none, the next order of business is reports of committee for final action. We'll start with Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1662, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for June 30 of 2021 with affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1562, Resolution Providing for the Continued Designation of a Downtown Pittsburgh Business Improvement District for the Area Shown on Exhibit A at the Behest of Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership, a Coalition of Property Owners, Business Leaders, Retailers, Civic Organizations, and Residents. Bill Number 1634, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Michael A. Douglas in the Amount of $2,717.88 in Settlement of a Claim for Damage to a Park Vehicle and Other Property Damage from a City Salt Truck on January 21, 2020. Bill Number 1656, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into an Agreement with Mar Duzel for Services Related to the Administration of the City's American Rescue Plan Act, Funding at a Cost Not to Exceed $200,000.
You've heard the reading of the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President, may I?
Yes, Councilman Kraus.
Good morning. Thank you. I, I just want to take a moment to recognize the Downtown Partnership and especially Jeremy Waldorf, the Executive Director, and the great work that they do downtown. I cannot imagine a downtown without the, the bid operating. It brings such a level of professionalism to the business district there. And I also want to recognize the work that they do with the South Side Flats here and helping with us to implement our clean team through our parking enhancement district and all the years of support that they have shown the South Side as well. I am very, very happy and pleased to vote in the affirmative today for the continuation of the Downtown Pittsburgh Business Improvement District. Thank you.
Madam President, may I?
Councilwoman Gross.
Apologies. Yeah, so I should also acknowledge the good work that they have been doing, the Downtown Partnership for the Strip District as well. So we have an overlap because part of it's the Golden Triangle and there's just a real, you know, we kind of contiguity there. And they've also been very helpful in working through mobility issues and most recently helped with some of the background data for the big announcement you might have noticed last week with the, the state of the Strip District plan that was able to kind of do exact square footage of development that there's over a billion dollars in private, not city, investment that is gone in and is ongoing in just the Strip District alone. And really, we couldn't have done, like, the neighborhood couldn't have done that project. It was really spearheaded by the Strip District neighbors, but they couldn't have done it without the partnership of the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership. And I want to also acknowledge the leadership that the PDP did in figuring out the kind of restaurant seating. I think we have a special name for it that I can't remember what that is, but the kind of dining out on the city streets at the beginning of COVID. It was really the PDP who helped try to figure out how the licensing, permitting, and safety issues should go. And it really helped all of our neighborhoods by them kind of taking the bull by the horns and figuring out how to do that quickly and safely and effectively for restaurants. So, thank you, Mr. Kraus. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other members? And I'll just also say, thank you to the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership and Jeremy. But I also want to thank and acknowledge that these things weren't happened for, weren't for support of council members and the administration. So thank you all for all your work collectively. Seeing no further discussion, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, will the, I will the name is. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Sorry, Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
I on the bills, no on 1656.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
On Bill 1656, eyes eight, knows one, all other bills, eyes nine, knows zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. It moves us on to Councilman O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1663, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for June 30 of 2021 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1635, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety on behalf of the city to Enter Into a Police Traffic Services Grant Agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, Division of Highway Safety for the Purpose of Receiving Funds in the Amount of $380,057.10 that will be used for Enforcement of Drunk and Impair Driving as well as related outreach activities. Bill Number 1636, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the city into a grant agreement with the Pennsylvania Auto Theft Prevention Authority for the Purpose of Receiving Grant Fund in the Amount of $291,142 that will be used to establish, coordinate, and fund activities to prevent, combat, and reduce auto theft.
You've heard the reading of the title of bills. Is, any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, will the, I will the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, knows zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1664, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for June 30 of 2021 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1637, Resolution that the Mayor and Director of City Planning on behalf of the city are hereby authorized to enter into a professional services agreement for a public art project coordinator with Casey Jordan Cultural Productions LLC to administer, coordinate, and document the city's 2021 Art in Parks Program at a cost not to exceed $25,000. Bill Number 1638, Resolution, Further Amending Resolution Number 647, entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 CBBG Program and the 2021 Through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Various Line Items Funded by the Community Development Block Grant Solutions Grant Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS and Home Investment Program.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, will the, I will the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, knows zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to our last committee of the day, Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President, I don't think I have any papers. Am I lost on my agenda now?
It's my cheat sheet.
Yeah, we have final action for you.
Oh, I see it there. Apologize. That's my problem. That's sorry. You were right. I was wrong. Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1665, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for June 30 of 2021 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1629, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision of the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the Allegheny Center Alliance Church, 745 Union Place. Bill Number 1630, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 819, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of City Planning in Cooperation with the Director of the Department of Public Works to Accept Funds from an Allegheny Regional Assets District in the Amount of $500,000 to Fund Public Art Projects in Emerald View Park, Brick Park, Island Park, Riverview Park, and Park to Restate the Recitals and Further Describe the Use of Funds. Bill Number 1631, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, in and to the Following Publicly Owned Properties in the Fifth Ward of the City Designated in the deed Registry Office of Allegheny County. in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as block ten L lots twenty-six and twenty-seven, located at twenty-three thirty-three and twenty-three thirty-one Center Avenue, respectively, Council District Number Six. Bill number sixteen thirty-two, Resolution approving and execution of a contract for disposition by seller land between the URA and Tom Toms Twenty-Four Development LLC or a related entity for the seller block ten P lots one thirteen, one thirteen A, B, and C, located at and surrounding twenty-one seventy-eight Center Avenue in the fifth ward, Council District Number Six. Bill number sixteen thirty-three, Resolution authorizing the director of, of the Department of Finance to enter into a right-of-entry agreement with the URA and city source associates to allow the removal of a tree located on designated city property.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, their passage will, if I were the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk, please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, knows zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to motions and resolutions. I have a few meeting announcements. This afternoon at one thirty PM, a council will be, will hold a cable cast post-agenda discussion on the American Rescue Plan as it relates to the bills sixteen fifty-two, sixteen fifty-five. Tomorrow, Wednesday, July seventh, council will meet at the Standing Committee's meeting at ten AM. Also, tomorrow afternoon at one thirty PM, council will can hold a cable cast post-agenda discussion with the Board of Education, the Superintendent, and President of the PFT on current and future plans and programs to increase academic achievement as it relates to Bill eleven thirty-five. And I believe that's going to be chaired by Councilman Burgess or Lavelle. Um, and Saturday, July tenth, at ten AM, council will hold a cable cast public hearing on the American Rescue Plan as it relates to bills sixteen fifty-two through sixteen fifty-five. To register for tomorrow's council meeting and public hearing, please fill out and the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by nine AM Wednesday for the Standing Committee's meeting and by nine AM Sunday, Saturday, for the public hearing. You may also register by calling four one two two five five two one three eight. Also, city residents and stakeholders are invited to share their input, input on the city's twenty-twenty-two operating budget by taking a, taking a survey either online at www engages.pittsburghpa.gov/2022budgets or the easy way by calling three one one. The twenty-twenty-two operating budget survey is open through July eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Is there anything from members? Seeing none, can I have a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
Second.
A second. Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.